Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so our agenda is going to be amended tonight. We're removing 6A. Yeah, can we get a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented with the removal of item 6A at this time.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is Scott on there?
Uh, no.
Okay. So the agenda passes. Presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Sir, anyone online?
Nope.
There's no one in the audience?
I'm so sorry. I did not hit the start webinar. That's really embarrassing. Didn't have the brain. Sorry. And still no one is.
Okay. Um, no members in the audience. Moving on to number three, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to number four, public hearings. There are no public hearings tonight. Number five, old business. There is no old business. Number six, new business. We have Midwood, uh, blah, blah, blah. Midwood Lamont Valley Council of Government contracts. Ron will give the report.
I have to find it here.
I lost my speaking ability there for a second.
So, uh, Midwood Lamont Valley Council of Governments is a government entity, and their purpose is to serve interjurisdictional agencies with various services. So, um, as council knows, we contract with them. Uh, this is a renewal of that yearly contract with updated rates. And they provide services, uh, at a billable charge, things like grant management, planning services, uh, they can help smaller cities with financial services, uh, just some of those different services that as small communities, we can't staff these positions, uh, permanently. And so we end up contracting with the COG is what we call it, the Council of Governments. Um, oftentimes for these services, we don't typically use, uh, a lot of their planning services only because of the fact that we do a little, we do very little application processing here for development. It's very sporadic and you, we might get a lot in one year and then we don't see a lot for a few years. And so most of our planning work is done in the form of inquiries, uh, from various people. And a lot of times it's just local property owners on things that they can and can't do on their property. And, um, we just tend to, uh, process that through my office. Uh, but we do use them for applications. There was a number of applications this year. We do have uh, some other applications coming up, uh, possibly in the next year or so. And so we want to continue our contract. They did raise their, um, billable rates, uh, their, their board of governance, which is made up of members from, um, within their membership group, usually at city, uh, mayors, things like that, uh, that are on their board and staff. Uh, they, they did review these and adopted these new rates. They're not, uh, uh, you know, dramatic increases, but I think they're around eight percent, um, roughly. And so, uh, staff, staff recommends that we continue the contract. So we renew the contract with the upgraded uh, rates, and I'm happy to answer any particular questions that you may have.
Um, just wanted to clarify, Ron. Um, I know we use them probably primarily for the planning side of things. I'd imagine, um, is there any other services that we really use them for? I mean, uh, besides, uh, you know, like anything legal or any other services?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's a couple of things that we use as ongoing services from them. There is a housing rehabilitation grant, and we belong to a group within kind of a group of jurisdictions that applied together jointly received these grants, and they're administered through the COG. And so what happens is, is there, there are reimbursement grants. So we, the, the, the system will have money dedicated to a community, uh, we'll loan that money to, for housing rehabilitation under the criteria. And then when that, um, loan is paid back, um, it goes back out into the form of new loans. So it's a recirculating loan. They do that for us. Um, I, I mean, they do a lot of services. We tend not to use a lot, but the way that the contract is set up, you, you pay a, a subscription membership similar to LLC, the Oregon Cities, and then you get the billable rate, which is a discounted rate. And so we just want to continue that membership and relationship. Um, Kirsty and I are going to meet with them this week and maybe talk about assisting with our sewer project, uh, grant applications and the funding mechanisms. Um, they do have some staff that have an expertise in dealing with the federal side of some of these grants. And, um, so we're going to talk about them, about their availability, what that assistance might look like, and then see if that's something we could recommend leveraging to help with the grants.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Midwood Lamont Valley Council of Governments and the City of Homestead as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe it's Scott on the line as well.
Yes.
Aye.
Moving on to, oh, so motion passes. Um, moving on to budget committee application. Ron?
We, uh, we received, we've been putting out notices on both our website, the newsletter, and I think some of our social media posts, uh, looking for folks to fill in, uh, openings in the budget committee. Uh, we had one person moved and had to resign. Uh, so we had a, another open position. Um, I think we may still have one unfilled. Uh, and so we did receive this application. Uh, from Laura Rinneker. Is that how you'd pronounce that? Okay. Yep. I haven't, uh, talked to her, but her application, um, she's interested. And, uh, and we love to have the community involved. As you know, as part of state law, we're required to have, uh, to at least try to fill an equal number of community members on our budget committee. She does have some background in accounting and finance, and I think would make a, a great sounding board for our budget committee, so.
Actually, um, talked with her.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Um, really nice person. Do we have, um, is there a motion?
I move to, to appoint Laura Ann Rinneker to the Vagan Budget Committee seat with a term expiring of December 31st, 2026, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It looks like Laura is appointed to the budget committee. Moving on to resolution 04-22, updating application fees for alarm permits. Ron?
Yep. So, uh, we adopted, uh, ordinance for, I believe, 490, uh, uh, when we redid all of our ordinances in 2020, and prior to that, it replaced an ordinance that preexisted. We just re-adopted it as a new number. And, uh, in the ordinance, um, uh, it says we will adopt a fee schedule by, uh, resolution. Uh, we've been charging a fee based on the original resolution, but to clean that up, we wanted to, because the ordinance was adopted, the new one after the resolution, we stumbled across this and said, we should probably reauthorize the resolution. And basically what that is, is when somebody has an alarm system, and when we think about this, we think about, you know, uh, people that actually get called out uh, for an alarm system, not somebody that's got like a ring doorbell or, you know, some silent alarm or quiet alarm in their house. This is one where the alarms go off all the time, a business, something like that. And, and law enforcement gets called. The purpose of doing the alarm application and renewal is to maintain a, uh, uh, accounting of, of these alarms in use so that when we respond, we know who to call, if the alarm's going off, who to contact, that kind of stuff. Uh, for years, we had some businesses that had alarms and they would go off a couple of times a week, and we, we knew who in the business, but we had no way to contact them because we didn't have a, a registry. And, and we've had that in place for, for many years now. So basically it's a $50 application fee. It's a license. You renew it every year. We do that to make sure that the application is, is up to date. The ordinance actually outlines fine or fee schedule. We reiterated it here in the resolution. But that's actually embedded in the ordinance itself. And so if somebody has an ongoing demand to our system responding to false alarms, we don't know they're false until we get there, right? But, um, if, a lot of times we'll have some of these systems just aren't dialed in right. And if we have to respond, um, after, I think it's three times, right? Uh, is that what it said?
Yes.
I think th- then they're subject to a fee. Now, if it's an error, you know, think, we're not going to charge them. But if somebody's just got a system that's defunct and they're not doing anything about it, at some point we need a mechanism to prompt them to get that, um, working right. And so it does a couple of things. One, it creates the registry. Uh, but the second thing is, is it gives us somebody up to date that we can call. If it's two o'clock in the morning, that officer on duty needs to be able to look this up and know who they can call. And so really the application fee is just staff time to maintain and collect all that data. And so, um, we'd like to get counsel to approve resolution 0424 and have to answer any additional questions.
I question Ron. Um, so, um, do we happen to have a lot of, uh, businesses on the, you know, roles that we do this service for?
Well, a lot of the businesses have alarm systems, but they've got them, you know, they're up to date. They know how to operate them. And typically if an alarm system is going off because somebody's broken a seal, somebody's burglarizing that business, and we're, we're getting a dispatch call to that regardless.
Right.
It's the ones where the alarm system's got some problem and it keeps going off and they haven't had anybody out to service it, or they set it off constantly and they don't hit cancel, and then we end up responding. Those are the circumstances, but typically, um, it's really systems that haven't been updated or maintained. We don't have a lot uh, of these anymore. We used to get quite a few of them, but, um, still there's a need to have this in place.
So these are alarms that direct them to dispatch, right?
They don't.
Where do they go?
Yeah. They don't necessarily, they could be monitored by a third party vendor, and that third party vendor could be calling in to dispatch. Um, there's other circumstances, but they could be. I mean, some are, but oftentimes it's a third party vendor that, that monitors.
Like the signs you see in the lawn.
ADT or, yeah, something like that.
So is there a cost to us? Dispatch or?
Well, possibly, yeah. Well, the cost is you're sent, taking an officer, right?
But other than that, we don't.
Yeah. I mean, we pay for, yeah, we pay for dispatch services for police.
So does this cost? I mean, does it cover?
No, we're just trying to, all we're trying to capture here is just the cost of processing and maintaining the database, the application, and the contact information. The fine is, you know, we'll come out as a courtesy three times in a year, but you know, if you're having an alarm every week, at some point that's to get them to get their alarm system fixed, basically. So they're not draining the system. It doesn't co- cover the cost of the officer to respond, and we're not really trying to do that, but we don't want to tie up our police department constantly going out to false alarms either.
Is that kind of consistent with what other cities are doing as far as?
Pretty consistent.
So what if, if, uh, one of our officers, we don't have somebody on duty?
Well, we have an interjurisdictional mutual aid agreement, so it would fall to Marion County. Uh, and there's actually a state law that requires Marion County to respond if there's no other law enforcement available. However, um, in recent years, Marion County has set a priority respond list in place. And typically they don't respond to calls that are non-life threatening. Um, now I'm not, I don't really know how they administer it in Marion County. That's just kind of a high level. So I don't want to say that that's exactly the way it happened because there may be other circumstances in play, but but typically it would fall, if there wasn't an officer on duty, it would fall to Marion County, who may or may not respond to property theft or potential property theft. Or completely, yeah.
But they wouldn't charge us.
No. Yep.
Are there any more questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 424, a resolution updating application fees to, for alarm permits as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's Scott?
Scott?
Aye, sorry.
Okay. Just wanted to.
I was hitting the spacebar, nothing was happening. I apologize.
About that.
So, motion passes unanimously. Um, moving on to preview, preview of suggested COLA and staff comparables for the 24, 25 budget. Ron?
So, um, I'm going to share my screen here just so I have a few visuals with council. It's big on my screen, but not so big on your screen, so. Hopefully you can see that. But really we highlighted this less about the individual numbers and just more about the visual of where those things were. So just by way of background, as council knows, uh, we don't, uh, have in place a union, uh, representational structure in the city. Um, what we typically do is we have a staff committee that get together and analyze, um, industry comparable rate, uh, wages and/or benefits and/or identify things that's a need or a change within, uh, the city. And then every three years they bring those forward. Um, this process was a little bit different because we started two years ago with a, the formation of a, uh, police union, uh, which ended up not fully forming or expanding before the conclusion of a contract. And as council knows, we made some recommended adjustments based on that process, uh, for, that was targeted at the police. Um, so, uh, what we try to do is we try to use 15, 13 to 15 comparable cities. And we try to use cities that are similar in nature to uh, our community, meaning we wouldn't use all coastal cities. We wouldn't use all cities on the central side of Oregon because those are all going to be different. So we look for things that have kind of like a uh, similar economic base, uh, type thing. If you used, uh, cities that were, um, outside of our comparables, it could really skew the numbers, uh, pretty dramatically. Maybe they've got a tourist bureau or a tourist charge that would provide a large influx of funds. And when you get a large influx of funds, your comparables could be different. So, but what we do is we break it down into each department. This is the city hall department. And for years we've had this policy, um, where we have looked at COLAS and we use a CPI, uh, W, a, uh, 12 month over 12 month comparable. Um, and then, um, we use these particular comparables, so they don't change every year. And our policy, or every three years, they're the same. Our policy has been to try to target above the medium range. Um, and so if you're, it, uh, if the medium salary is like $6,000, let's say, we want to, we try to be five or 10% above that. Um, for a couple of reasons. One is we want to provide incentives for people to stay um, uh, for a long time. So if you look at these, I just give you this as a visual instead of doing the percentages, but if you look at this as a visual, um, you can see we're pretty much right in the center for most of our admin, uh, positions. Now, that's skewed a little bit in that some of the, some of the positions are right at the four to five percent range, and some of the positions because of the one above and the one below might be at a two or, or three percent range above the medium. And so, um, in this particular case, we're recommending, uh, two adjustments. One would be to the finance uh, position, and we're recommending a three percent, uh, one-time adjustment. And then that would bring that position up to the five percent, which is our, kind of our target.
But it is right now or is this what you're proposing? Are these the ways?
This is what we're proposing. Yes. And then, um, the, uh, clerk's position, we reorganized that position, and we actually changed that title to assistant administrator for a couple of reasons. Every time we have an opening in the city, one of the things we do is analyze what the need is at that moment. And, um, we have a lot of administrative need related to contracts and personnel and agreements and loans and grants and things like that. And so we kind of, we changed the title of that. And, uh, if you looked at the clerk position, we actually are a few hundred dollars a month below where we would want to be, to be in our five percent minimum comparable. But, um, I'm actually, uh, proposing tonight that we, uh, change that pay scale $1,000 at the top step to top step. That puts us between those two and that we, we officially adopt the title, um, assistant administrator as a position in the city. There were no comparables for me to look at uh, in our group at, in his assistant administrator. So, um, we just kind of had to take a stab at it, but I, I do think it's conservative. I think if we did find assistant administrator positions, they're probably going to be at that or a little higher. But, uh, I spoke with the person, uh, in that position, and we basically agreed that that was a good range to look at.
How many steps do we have right now?
Seven, for all our positions.
So you want to add an eight to this one?
Well, I just want to change the dollar amount at the top step up $1,000. That's all. So the steps stay the same. That person would stay where they are in their longevity. It's just they're going to have a couple of years of extra steps.
But this isn't a total. This is a step adjustment.
This is just a step adjustment. And so that's, that's on the admin side. Um, the other group that we looked at, uh, we did relook at PD, and we did that for a couple of reasons, even though council did do the adjustment. If council remembers when we talked about that adjustment, I said, you know, we need to go up a couple of a percent because my data shows that we're you know, that we're a little lagging there. We did do that one-time adjustment. Even with that adjustment, everybody's looking right at that five percent range, so we're meeting our target with that adjustment. The, uh, police support specialist, who is also our court officer, is just a little bit below, as you can see. Um, and when I say below, I, if I look at that data, um, let me see if I can see it here. Um, it's, it's 1.57% above the medium. So she's not below the medium, but our target is 5%. So I'm, I'm recommending a 3% adjustment there. So we've got two positions. We're recommending a 3% adjustment. We've got one position. We're recommending a, um, step adjustment. And then.
This is after the, you apply the adjustment.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So what, my concept of, of a COLA is that everyone gets the same COLAs. And ours is. We're not to that yet. Okay. We're talking about just.
We're just talking.
Salary adjustments right now. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
This is Public Works and, uh, for the Public Works Division, which is great, we've actually done a good job of being at that five to 10%. Most of those positions are closer to 10, which is really good because Public Works folks are getting snatched from cities all over the place because there, they have a special skill set. And oftentimes they have, um, earned certifications to be able to operate water and sewer systems. And it takes a long time to earn those certifications. So you can't just operate a system. You have to be certified. Somebody has to be certified. And can you see that? Can I blow it up a little bit more for you? Um, and so we're doing okay in Public Works. We don't have any, uh, changes that we recommend to them right now. Uh, they're doing a great job, and as you can see, we're, we're holding our own on that. Um, and then when we did our, uh, COLA analysis, if we use that CPI formula, it's a year over year change. So the distinction is it's not, you take all of the, um, inflationary increases for 12 months and divide them by 12. That's not the formula we use. What we use is you look at January in one year, you look at January in the next year, and what is the difference between those two? And that's an acceptable way of factoring in a COLA. Uh, both ways are acceptable, but with the last few years of having erratic inflational, um, changes to the inflation rate month over month, it would be askew to try to do a 12-month rolling average. So we use that CPI year over year, and it came in at 3.3%. Um, we always round, um, up with those, so we're recommending to do 4%, um, uh, as, as a COLA. Uh, there's a lot of cities that just take the 3.3%, whatever the formula says, and that's what they apply. We certainly could do that. Um, but I, I feel more comfortable, um, applying the 4%. I just feel like if you looked at the last 12 months, 3% inflationary rate is pretty low. But that again is up for council to decide. Now, we don't need council to set this in stone, um, because we haven't went through the budget yet. But we need you to confirm that we can use these as, uh, at least a basis um, for going through the budget. I will tell you that there's not going to be an issue uh, with the budget this year. It's looking really good. Um, our financial disciplines are working. Uh, you know, the, the anomaly and that thing, uh, is, is just the whole, uh, sewer influx with the, with the sewer project, and that will have to, we'll have to do an increase. Remember last year we talked about what we needed over a two-year period, uh, as far as increases. So we'll have to look at that increase again this year just for the inflation of operating the system. And then we'll have, uh, a year, probably our recommendation will be next June. Uh, we'll have a year to, um, uh, go through the analysis of a rate for the new system. Uh, we'll do a couple of public meetings on that, and then we'll, we'll have time to make sure we really do a good communication outreach to the community on what that looks like for that capital expenditure, um, before we recommend putting it in. So our plan will be next June to look at that, uh, rate. And I don't want to give you the numbers publicly, but I will tell you that um, just from all the work that we've done, uh, those rates are, are much, much better to the consumer than what we even thought that they would be. So it's not going to be, I got to move out. I gotta move out of my house rate, um, it's going to be a bit of a bump and, and people will have to make an adjustment, but. It's, it's not the crazy scary. Numbers we once. Thought they would be. Um.
Go back to the police one again?
Sure.
It'd actually be nice if you could send these to us. We had a little bit more time for me, anyways, we had a little more time to look at them.
Sure. Now, not every city, uh, in our comparables have police departments, some cities contract. Uh, for services with like county. Um, and we put that in there, uh, there are various counties. But most of them do, and so we get a good comparable. The nice thing for us this year is we were actually able to get all the cities. In our comparables to respond typically when we get about eight or 10. Um, and we're actually able to get all of them. Yeah. So, um, I want to make sure that I'm giving you this correctly, so. Um. I have a. Graph, graph, graph. Rates, rates, rates. I thought I had a.
Dot, dot, dot on the left, might show you some more.
Is there another one here?
To the left of CH rates.
All's to the left. There we go. There's the step plan and so, um. This would be the, uh. Assistant city administrator step plan. Right here. As you can see, this is the. Clerk's step plan, so, um. I don't think that rate was adjusted on the clerk because we were making this recommendation, so. If you go over here to city hall rate analysis. You could see the clerk, uh. Was about three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Under the average. Which this is the average. So, yeah, that, 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 the, where we were, we're not adjusted. But this is the step.
You send those other charts, could you send that chart to us also?
This is the, this one is adjusted.
Uh, just so that we could see it? Cause I can't see what it's saying.
This one here, you want that?
Yeah, I'd like to have a pulse to study them a little bit, but the other thing is. My other question is, I don't know exactly what the job description of a utility worker too.
Yeah. It's, I mean, they're comparable with other cities, that's just the pay scale because. They, of the water, wastewater certifications that they have to have. Um, but remember, we're comparing them to other cities, police departments, other cities.
That, do we pay for those certifications?
Uh, no, we pay for them. Yeah, we pay for them. The same with the police, we pay for all, all that stuff too. What's not included in here is some of the other. You know, comps or different types of benefits that they get too, so. Um, you know, police may, you know, they get certain. Call out bonuses and overtime bonuses that are different than everybody else. But that is the comparable. Case. I'm just giving you the comparables.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see.
Yeah. Can you see that okay?
Yeah. You're going to send them to us.
I'd be happy to, yeah. But I do need direction from council, at least some guidance on if you're supportive of the COLAs. Um, and then are you supportive of our recommendation on these, uh, step changes? Uh. And then we can make sure. We haven't implemented into the budget model right now, but we can change that if it's. If it changes. I don't want to go to the budget committee with a skew number.
This is implemented into the budget you're bringing forward.
That's what he's asking for, he would like direction so that he can implement it.
Yeah, I would definitely be, because we've got some great people that work here and. They earn it. Yeah.
Yeah. Part of it in general, yeah.
Good. Alright. Okay, that's all I need.
I would like to let everyone know I'm in the process of doing Ron's review. That's my job as city council president. And so I will be contacting each of you. Just to go over some things and make sure, um, so far on the part that I've done, he's doing very well. And I am asking because he is at the top of his step that we give him a merit increase of fifteen hundred dollars a month. He's had nothing adjusted on his salary other than steps since two thousand nineteen. I didn't do a percentage.
See how, make sure it's an equivalent COLA.
Well, he still receives the COLA the same as everyone else, but.
I mean salary adjustment.
There is a step process for a reason though. When you max out, you max out.
Yes, but he has worked very hard these last years. Helping. The mayor and the council presidents and us to. Work through the sewer system and getting the grants and all of the work that we've done. And he has not been recognized for any of that additional work that he has put in.
And I would not discredit Ron's. Uh, stuff that he's up for the city because he's done great things. I will. Recognize that, but there is a reason why there are steps.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing the comparisons.
I could, I could, I could show that to you here. Let me, uh, do a quick.
Is that something we're voting on or is that something we're going to talk about when we?
It has to go in the budget just like everything else. Direction and he can't give us direction on that. It has to come from us.
Well, I'm, uh, in a step process too and I'm going to max out, so. Can I get a raise too?
Fortunately, I'm not your boss, Scott.
I'd give it to you, Scott. Scott, I'd give you a raise, I'd give you another step.
I, I'm going to raise your chair right now, Scott.
Um, there are other things that others, that other city administrators get, they get, um, a car stipend, there's other things to look at. Um, I don't know when the last time Ron had a step added, I don't know when his.
That was in two thousand nineteen, so.
Um, that was a step added. Back in two thousand nineteen?
We added two steps.
Okay.
Cause he was already added. But. That's a lot more work to do than giving a merit raise. Or. Saying he's been doing a good job. I would recommend that we look at doing that next time.
I like the idea of giving him.
Can we get the information on the, the one that? That, um, Doug asked for like. The percentage and then the process of what it is to add, um, another step. And then maybe look at. Um, if that's not. Um, an option. Look at other ways. Other, other things that other city administrators are getting. Um, I will say that Ron has been a tremendous help. Um, the work that he does is invaluable. As a city, we are performing at a higher output than other cities. Um. Incomparable to. To the same, like looking at.
Size and smaller staff, everything.
Um. Steps can be added and adjusted, that's why we have this process. Um. We just need to make sure we go through the right process. And then.
So I'm trying to just bring that. Form back up, but for some reason. Says I'm sharing my screen. See if I can get you.
Think you're sharing the wrong screen.
Well, I see that.
You know, you're only supposed to put things on your screen that are important, like not everything.
I have everything on my screen. So if you look at the comparables, this is the administrator. Um. Column right here. So it's about what council member senior is recommending is about a thirteen percent adjustment. Um, but it's not. It's not the top. So it's somewhere between these two. These.
Hard angle to see.
So the, the dark yellow is where I'm. I'm at. Um.
So we haven't given our input on the evaluation yet. I think. The discussion and process when we give the input on.
I will be contacting each of you individually for your input. Hoping to do that in the next week, but I've had a death that I'm dealing with right now, so. Not had time yet to finish that part.
Okay.
Is there some kind of form?
No, it's. It's actually, it's easier to call and go over that with you than it is. To do at form.
We, we used to do an evaluation form and just send it out with kind of instructions, but, um, there was some. In the last couple of years, there was some concerns raised about the inconsistency. Of. How people were addressing each issue in the form and asked for a different process. And so basically it was to take a lead. Person, which is our personnel commissioner and have her make individual contact and then. Have a discussion about any concerns. Or strengths or weaknesses and then, um, input that into the form. So we had something that was tied to. Performance because the impressions. Of an individual that you. Had a five-minute conversation. At the store with or working their ways into my evaluations, they weren't really tied. To the metrics of. The daily job. Uh, essential job requirements or tied to my performance against goals. So we, we were asked by council to change that a little bit. I just wanted to explain that a little bit more for.
But you're asking for it, but we haven't seen the goals.
You set the goals.
The, those are the goals that we set at our retreat. And our work sessions that we've had. Like what we want done with parks, what we want done with water and sewer.
So we look over these goals when we're. I don't.
Yes, I can do that.
Now, when do we? When's our deadline of?
Well, the problem is that. We only have two weeks before we start budget. And we don't. We meet one night and then the next night is budget. So.
So we would need our answers back to you before the budget. We'd need the eval.
Well, the budget has to be published 10 days before we have our first meeting. Um, so we're actually going to have to put our proposed budget out, so. It'll have to be a discussion that you guys will have after the fact.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
And that can't be, I want to make sure we don't end up having like a serial meeting, um. For the purpose of that, how, how should we go about that? Do I just?
Dela's going, Dela's going to take the, um. Evaluations, she's going to meet with each council member individually, either. Face to face or be.
That part I understand. I was talking about the merit question and the percentage of raise and stuff like that.
That, I don't know, you guys will have to.
Okay.
Figure that out. All right, would you like me to move on, Mayor?
Um, are we done with that? Then, yeah, we can move on to number seven and move on to city administrator report.
So, uh, police department report didn't get out the first of the month, so we put it in this package. Uh, and it's, uh, updated. Everything's moving along well with our projects. Uh, our building project is almost complete. Um, we will have a grand opening, we'll get council out there to tour the facility too, prior to the grand opening. Um. Uh, the mayor and I have been attending a, a new leadership. Uh, group that formed, we were there at this last meeting. Um. And we've been meeting as administrators, uh, in Marion County for, for a long time. Um. But. We didn't really have. Like the elected officials as part of that, and so a new regional group that started in. State and Sublimity, the school district and, uh. Marion County Sheriff and. Some, uh, elected officials formed and we've been attending those meetings. Um, they're kind of, uh, I don't know, they're not really open. But usually we just get a direct invitation, so. I'm sure if somebody wanted to go, one, you're welcome to attend, but. Um. Really, it's just talk about some of the challenges and at the last one, we had our state senator and our representative was there. And they really did talk about stuff like. Zoning issues was discussed, some OSHA issues were discussed. And, um. Uh, I think from that standpoint, it was great to have the representatives hear some of those local concerns in that. In that format because it wasn't our issue. Um, necessarily, it was somebody at the table's issue that was being. Um. Echoed by other jurisdictions that have to deal with that, those, some of those same issues. And then the other thing that's came out of that group that I think has been kind of, uh, nice. Is a partnership within the cities. And so even though we compete against the same pools of grants. Oftentimes for the same funding. Uh. Dollars. There's been this consensus among cities that we can rely on the cities to actually support. Our application, so I may send a support letter to Staten for an ORPD grant. They may send one right back to me for support. For the grant and oftentimes they echo the same thing. And that is as. Rural communities in close proximity. Um, there's a need and that need doesn't stop at the city limits. A lot of people that use our parks are. People from other cities. People from outlining areas outside the city. And so to some extent, we're doing something a little bit unique because typically. We wouldn't use them as a. A supporting agency. Um, and so there's some good things happening there. I'm trying to keep my head, uh, above water to some extent. With, uh, a number of the new. Laws that were passed. Uh, not just this year. Because there was a number of laws. Passed last year that I still don't fully have a, an accounting for. And the year before, there's not a, um. We don't get something that says, here are all the new laws that impact you as a local jurisdiction. And when you're dealing with hundreds and hundreds of bills. Um. That get signed at the end of a session, sometimes it's more than that, it's a thousand. Uh, we don't have personnel to wade through. Uh. Each of those individual bills. Uh, one of our staff did track. Some of the bills as they were going through. Uh, committee. Um, this year, and so, you know, we were. More aware than we have been in the past, but. Um, you know, that's a full-time. It's a.
With blashing.
That's a position. And so, um, there's some, there's some laws that I. That sometimes just pop up, um. Uh, there was one on restoring recreational immunity I was working on today. Uh, you, as you know, there was a litigation. I believe it was Newport, the city of Newport. Um. In that one of their, somebody was injured on one of their trails, they formed litigation. Uh. That litigation turned into, um, this idea that. Based on court cases, maybe we don't have recreational immunity restored like we thought we did. And then the legislature made a fix. In this session. So that people could use our trails without us assuming liability. That's a temporary fix, it's only good until the end of the short session. Resolution term, which is twenty twenty-five. Then they have to have something long-term. There, there's a requirement. Again, you stumble across this when you have time to research. Again, you stumble across this when you have time to research, uh, where we have to adopt an ordinance or a resolution uh, limiting the city's liability. And basically you're posting to all users that we're limiting the city's liability. And so we'll see that at the next council meeting. Um, we'll see the, uh, a franchise agreement for, um, uh, FTX, which is Visor, as the sub name for Visor. Their franchise expired. We've been working with them. We finally got uh, to a point where we can bring that forward to council. Um, communication franchises are regulated above us. And so, uh, there's only so much you can really do with these, but we tried to make a contract that number one was a little simpler. Uh, but two would hold them a little bit more accountable to operate in the franchise in the city. So hopefully we've done that. Um, we've got a number of other franchise. We've got Pacific Power is on an extended uh, resolution for their franchise. We were, I think really close to bringing that one forward and then, um, Comcast, we're working with Comcast on our franchise. So we're working with all those things. And then there are a number of changes to the laws that we have to go and basically we have to scour our ordinances and see if they're consistent with some of these changes. I stumbled across one this last week. I was talking to the mayor about, we had that issue with electrified fences. And, um, we don't allow electrified fences because of the potential harm to the community. 2022, there was a legislative bill that said cities can't regulate that. Um, I don't understand that. I don't understand why cities weren't outreach for. That seems like it's a public safety issue, but, um, so, uh, so, you know, to some extent we have to allow those. Now, the, the, the law is very basic and there's now some litigation filed because of that. Because the law says in non-residential areas. And so the fence companies would like to think that that means everywhere except a residential zone. Uh, and cities interpretation of that is uh, that if you're, if you are allowed residential dwellings in any zone, then electric fences aren't allowed in that zone, meaning a lot of cities have to allow residential zones in industrial areas. Um, commercial areas, uh, just because of this legislature that was passed. And so if you do in those areas, there's a consensus that, um, they can't go in that area by the cities, not necessarily by the fence companies. So there's litigation that's circulating now. But it's all these things that you don't know about because, you know, we don't always have extra time in our day to research and absorb, but we do have a lot of development. Um, land use related changes in the last two years that we have to, we're gonna have to revamp some of, some of that. So we'll be working on that. So lots of stuff going on. We're still moving forward with corn festival. Um, we think we have a band selected. We're just waiting to get, uh, a contract signed.
And I asked him.
With those folks. So, um, I think that's gonna be great. And everything's moving along. Sponsors are doing good. People are coming in for circus tickets a little bit. So that's happening. We did get some sponsors for a number of child tickets to give away for free in the community. I think we're, I don't want to give a number, but I think it's over 200, um, children tickets. So there's 200 kids. We don't ask if they're from the city. They can be from anywhere. Um, if they have a child and they want to go to the circus, we'll give them a ticket. Uh, so that's, that's, that's working really well. Um.
Will we start having corn festival meetings on?
Well, we have an event planning meeting once a month and corn festival is one of our agenda items. Um, but, uh, if council wants to have, uh, just a meeting on corn festival, I say we could either commission a work session, talk about it. Um, and I, I thought we did that before. I was pretty sure we had a meeting and we talked about some of those things, but.
After one of our council.
Yeah. If you'd like to have another one, we, we could do that. If you have some subjects you want to cover, I'm happy to.
I think just an update as things move.
I can do that right now if you want it. Yeah. Um, so, uh, we have ordered corn. That's the important thing. Council has picked the theme. Uh, you voted for Grand Marshall. Uh, you guys ranked your Grand Marshall choices. And we've notified the Grand Marshall and they've accepted. So that's, uh, Marv and Sheryl Setler from Blazers. Uh, so they're gonna be our grand marshals. Um.
It was just one person as the grand marshal.
Well, we, we said, uh, the settlers Blazers, so they're the two owners. That's their husband and wife. So that's their brand. That's, that's who we did. Um, yes, we didn't pick multiple grand marshals. Yeah, yeah. Um, now that doesn't mean we couldn't do something like Angie and I even talked about this. Uh, we thought we'd batted around maybe for next year of doing like a citizen of the year, business of the year. Um, you know, if we wanted to adopt something like that, I think that would be great. Uh, and encourage some more participation. Um, uh, you could do that this year if you wanted to, but then, you know, we'll have to go through a process to figure out what does that look like, but that's up to you guys. Um, happy to do that. Uh, so we have the theme, the parade is set. Uh, and the parade kind of operates to some extent on autopilot. We developed a kind of a format where we do the theme. Uh, Dela's volunteered to register people. She has a group of volunteers that helps with that. It's a fairly blue, uh, programmed process.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. I've done it. It's a lot of work, but we have a system down for doing that. And then, um, uh, I've transitioned down to the park and kind of lead that effort. One of the things we did last year, just to give you an update, uh, is we, we took a lot of time and, uh, developed a consistent map for vendors. And we didn't have that before. We just kind of put somebody here, put somebody next to them. Uh, kind of thing. And we did that differently last year. Now we've fine tuned that a little bit this year because we had issues, uh, with like food trucks coming in. They take a lot longer to set up. And so when they came in, they held up the people that could set up quickly. Uh, and so those, this year, all the food trucks had to give us an exact measurement of the space that they needed. And they have to come in on Friday and set up. So we won't have that issue. Um, but we're gonna use the map or the layout that we developed last year because it actually worked pretty well. And it had a good flow for consumers and we really liked that. Um, and so I think we're all set up there. We did raise the rates just a little bit because we made a fairly large investment in electricity and stuff last year. And our event is actually really inexpensive for vendors. Uh, and we have a lot of demand. Last year we turned people away. We're gonna have to do that this year. I think we've got probably 60 or 70% of the spots taken and we've only been open for a week. So, or two. Uh, so, um, we're probably gonna have to do that again. So it's, it's really inexpensive for folks. We did develop some new rules related to vendors and conduct because you know, not everybody gets there and they're all excited. Um, uh, and so we did some of that.
Too excited.
Huh?
Or too excited.
Or too excited. Uh, so we did adopt some conduct rules because I don't want to have to take an hour. I don't have time to take an hour to convince some vendor that, you know, I can mitigate their issue. It's not worth a hundred dollars. They can just go. And so we just had to adopt that because what happens is it's then an hour, people are backing up that are other vendors that can't get in. So, uh, we did adopt some rules. We wanted something in place because I, I wanted to have something in writing that they actually had to sign and agree to before I took those types of steps, but we've never really had that.
My question would be, do what do you need from us? Last year was my first year.
Yeah.
I was like.
Yeah.
I mean, you said that, um, Dela volunteered to do the parade, which is great, but what else is out there that you need one of us to volunteer for?
Just so you know, I've been doing the parade longer than I've been on council.
Well.
Nobody wants to do the parade.
Typically council likes to be in the parade and they may invite their family with them. We're looking for some different type of a vehicle or conveyance for the council. We haven't really found something yet. Um, it may just be a trailer for you guys this year. We can use the little cart, but my understanding is you feel like it goes too slow. Or something.
We felt like we were gonna have to get out and walk back. That's what they said.
The battery was like, can we fix it? Can we fix the car? Like, I don't, there's the problem with the car.
That's just the speed that it travels, but we're, we're looking, we're looking for an opportunity.
Have you seen those trolley cars that are for sale?
We, I sent Public Works down to look at them. Yeah. The, the problem Public Works is concerned is you'd have to have a one ton vehicle to tow it. They're really heavy duty commercial. And it's not like you could tow it around with just a regular vehicle. And, um, that was their concern that they were too heavy. But we're looking for those opportunities, I guess is my point, to get you something different.
My concern was the price. I saw the price.
Actual cost, yeah.
Yeah.
And the problem with the cart that we have now is that it's only used once or twice a year. And the batteries don't last between them. So you're constantly buying new batteries.
Now, once we get a place to store that inside, it, it may be, we painted it and everything last year for the council, but once we get it inside and get it stored, it may hold the charge longer. Um, but when you're thinking about, it's not a very big trolley and then, you know, you put 10 people or 12 people on it. Um, you know, it's carrying quite a little bit of weight for the batteries, but um, there's a couple of things we'd like to improve. Yeah. There, there's a few things we'd like to improve with, uh, with how that works, but those are things that you do as a work in progress. Um, we are gonna make some, uh, changes, uh, down on the outside of the building there where we have the little picnic tables outside the covered area. We're gonna pour some more concrete there for the cookers, uh, to get them out of those entryways. Um, that's been just a bit of a concern having them right there. Um, so we're gonna do that before this year's corn festival. Last year we bought all new metal picnic tables. Um, and we also have some that fold up that are easy to move. And we're gonna, we're gonna mount some of those in the park in various locations. Um, and so we've got new picnic tables. It's gonna be a good event. Yeah. I, the, the corn price went up a little bit. It's just what's happening. Um, and we'll offset that through sponsors and through, uh, you know.
Would just be nice to have a little bit of direction towards what do you need?
Yeah. Well.
Maybe nobody else feels that.
Are you good at chucking?
You're good at. You chuck corn? How about bagging corn?
You can spend as much time as you want volunteering at corn festival after the parade, or if you don't want to do the parade, you can come down early and volunteer. Um, but typically, uh, where we really see a need is, um, we want you to be able to also interface with the community. So typically we'd want you to like be towards the front table handing out corn as elected officials, but there's lots of other labor jobs if you're just looking for something to do. Our, most of our volunteers do sign up in advance and they say, I'm gonna dedicate two hours and then we schedule them in to a duty and a time slot. And, um, so depending on when you show up, if you're not, if you didn't go through that process, we may just be spontaneously giving you a duty, but i- if you sign up through the website, um, we can put you actually into, uh, a time slot that works for you and give you a task.
I will tell you, part of, um, being on council is being one of the judges of the floats and the different things too.
Yeah.
So don't forget to show up for that part.
Yeah. Yeah, but we always, we always bag corn on Friday. Uh, as many people that want to show up and do that as possible is welcome. And we usually start bagging around nine ish o'clock. Um, and, uh, usually takes us two or three hours to bag corn on Friday, right? Is that right?
Not anymore.
Well, it was quite a, last year.
Yeah.
Totally different.
Last year was different. We had 68 volunteers.
Yes. If we get that many volunteers, that'd be awesome.
Yeah. We built some more of those tables that I built last year. We made some more. So we have stations. The whole idea is to try to make it as easy as possible on the volunteers to go through this labor intensive work. So we built some more tables for bagging corn, but there's a physical element because the corn gets dumped in a pile. And you have to, you know, pick it up and get it to the table. Poor Walter, that was his duty last year. And we, we, we've got some tarts where you can, you know, put the corn on the tarp and then two people lift the tarp under the table. So we're looking for ways to make that labor part less physically demanding. But at corn festival itself, after you're done with all your council duties, um, we always bag some of the corn that's down at the cooking shed. Uh, there's always a, a couple, two, 300 bags that get sold out of that stack as well as cooked. Um, usually, uh, Public Works will sign somebody to help with cook because we don't want to volunteer to deal with the, um, cookers. They're very hot.
Right.
So it's either me or a member of Public Works is typically cooking. Um, but other than that, chucking, bagging, serving. You got the duty of butter dipping. Um, and, uh, so we'll do all those things. We're gonna try to improve that a little bit this year. Yeah, too. And, um, if you have any specific questions, uh, it's, it's just moving along. Friday night, uh, we'll have the music on main. Triva's agreed to do that. I think we're, I think we almost got the, um, entertainment sewed up. Otherwise she's gonna handle everything else. There was some discussion about, um, the fire district maybe doing a car show. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I think that's still on.
That's still.
Yeah, I think that's happening.
I was gonna ask about that.
So we're getting other folks to kind of jump in and, and, and help enhance, uh, corn festival, which is what our idea was. Um, we.
That'd be on the Friday, the same night as.
Yeah, it should be, um, in conjunction with the music on main from what I understand and, uh,
That'd be very cool.
It's, um, I know it's been some times we've had, um, you know, kind of a car show element to the corn festival. I think that was kind of the big main motivator as well as, you know, uh, giving a fire district a little bit of opportunity for outreach and also to do something fun. So.
Yep. We do plan on doing our contests again this year. They're always popular. Um, corn eating and I can't remember what all we do. I think there's corn eating and we do a cake sauce. I think there's a three-legged bag race or something like that that we do. There's, there's a number of games. Yeah. Uh, so we'll do that again this year and then, um, otherwise I think, I think it's gonna be a good event. I think our interest in the event this year is as good or better than I've seen it, uh, since I've been here. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Field of Dreams.
You picked it.
I don't remember.
You picked it. It's you, Doc.
Grow it and they will come.
Yeah, grow it and they'll come. Yeah.
Yeah, grow it and they will come. Field of Dreams.
Yeah. Did I talk long enough, Mayor?
I think so.
Okay.
Uh.
But I did save us another special meeting.
Yes. Um, moving on to, uh, mayor and counselor reports. Is there anything to report? Is there anything for good of the order? Oh, Nico, sorry.
Um, so I had a little bit of an announcement to make. Uh, gonna invite Megan to come up here real quick. She's got a little something to give each of y'all. Um, I think it's got everybody's name on it. Um, so, um, it's been a little bit interesting time for me to make this announcement just because of just what's been going on with me health wise. Um, I'm at this point, uh, doing, um, about five out of the seven evenings a week. I'm, uh, working out. I'm getting, uh, two miles of walking in. So I'm kind of doing my best to keep, um, in shape following my bariatric surgery and, um, you know, I really want to keep on that healthy bend. Um, so just, I want to kind of just, uh, let you guys know. And this isn't anything bad, you know, it's a thing, good thing, but, um, just, uh, was giving you guys a letter, kind of explaining that I'll be, uh, stepping down from my position. I'll be retiring um, as a city counselor. Um, really bittersweet for me because I really truly love our community and it's, you know, despite all its ups and downs and challenges, it's been amazing, but I'll go and just read the letter. Um, distinguished colleagues and city staff, uh, following consultation with my partner Megan and my. distinguished colleagues and city staff, uh, following consultation with my partner Megan and my family, I've come to the conclusion that now is the ideal time to announce my retirement from the Omso City Council effective Wednesday, May first at midnight. Um, I plan on uh, being involved um, in city means and events up until that time and just having served my community in some sort of capacity between the budget committee and the council um, since two thousand and seven, um, you know, serving as Parks Commissioner, you know, being here for our tornado that came through in two thousand and ten. Transitioning to new city administrator in two thousand and fifteen and a close run for mayor in two thousand and sixteen. Participation in our successful recall in two thousand and eighteen, COVID and of course the threat of wildfires uh, peppered in. Uh, I feel it's the right time for uh, new leadership within um, our local government. Um, and just to be open and transparent with all of you, um, you know, no one's asking you to step aside or to tell me to, you know, your time is up, you know, it's um, you know, I've came, came to this conclusion just after talking with my family as well as just uh, prioritizing my health. Uh, my blood pressure's been the best it's ever been. I have so much energy and um, you know, I really want to focus on that. You know, our challenges aren't unique. It requires the full attention as involvement from our citizens, especially from a place of a fresh perspective. And as one to emphasize, even though I'm retiring from my council position, I plan on continuing to be involved, volunteering in our community. With the Corn Festival Princess Program as well as the work that I do through the fire district, through the support team, as well as the budget committee within the fire district. I plan on continuing that. And uh, don't worry, uh, there'll be a retirement party of some kind, uh, and we'll make sure it's appropriate. Um, you know, that'll be in the works, of course. Uh, and you know, I can't say specifically what's in the future for me, but I would like to utilize this experience to advocate for Almsville and our county and our state. Um, you know, in relation to especially issues with infrastructure, mental health, public safety and uh, you know, exploring some greater options for housing. Um, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart. I want to thank all of you and thank our citizens. And uh, thank staff passing the current for um, just your support and just collaborating. I know there've been times we've wanted to kind of butt, you know, kill each other, butt each other's heads, you know, and uh, you know, I appreciate all of you no matter what, you know, uh, for the work that we did together. This experience has been one of a lifetime and I will never forget building the amazing relationship uh, that we forged together. And it's been a blessing. So thank you, guys. And uh, last thing I'm gonna say is we brought some dessert this evening, so please don't scurry out of here without getting a little bit. We'd like to share that with you. My report. Thank you, guys. I appreciate every one of you tremendously.
Kind of sad.
It's new beginnings, new beginnings for everybody.
When someone makes health decisions, always, this will, this will always be here. We should always be looking for replacements. Always do what's best for you and your family. And I, I'm sad to see you leave this part, but um, I am grateful for, for the journey that we've had.
Definitely, and you know, I'll be sticking around and.
You know, I hear bagging corn is really good cardio.
What was that?
I said I hear bagging corn is really good cardio.
You know, you know, that is true, especially, you know, you get into a rhythm.
Yeah.
Which some more or seasoned volunteers have it down pat.
Okay, um, I, can I add one?
Yeah.
I just wanted to um, acknowledge the fantastic job Ron did and and the staff that helped him with the volunteer appreciation night is fabulous. And thank you, Ron, for all your hard work.
The jerks are always amazing. All right, moving on, uh, correspondence. I think this counts as correspondence. Um, and then there is no executive session, so we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen PM.